Buenas, half a day, everyone. Good morning. This virtual public hearing by the Committee on Public Accountability, Human Resources, Guam Build-Up, Haguenya Revitalization, Regional Affairs, Public Library, Telecommunications and Technology is hereby called to order. Today is Friday, November 19th, 2021, and the time now is 10:00 a.m. For the record and in accordance with open government law, notices for this hearing were sent on November 12th, 2021, and again on November 17th, 2021. In addition, this hearing was noticed on the Guam Legislature's website. I'd like to thank Senator Joanne Brown for joining me for this hearing today. Sidoos Masi. Before we begin, I'd like to first provide some general rules of conduct for all in attendance. The conduct of this hearing shall be as follows. All must abide by the rules of conduct and quality assurance standards. Please keep your video on at all times and ensure that you are in a room with little interruptions and adequate lighting so that we can see your face. When speaking, please ensure that you are unmuted and that you are speaking into the microphone. The chair will invite individuals who have signed up to testify. And individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and shall state their name for record purposes. The order of questioning will begin with the panel of senators. And each member will be allowed to post questions to an individual testifying for a round. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance and nature of this agenda. Personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or individual testifying is not permitted. Any violations of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the meeting room. On the agenda today, we have the appointment of Nolan G.T. Flores, Member, Student Representative of the Board of Directors of the Guam Public Library System, and the appointment of J.C.T. Bravo, Youth Member, Board of Trustees, Guam Educational Telecommunication Corporation, KGTF PBS. We will begin with the first item on our agenda. That is, the appointment of Nolan G.T. Flores, Member, Student Representative, Board of Directors, Guam Public Library System. At this time, I'd like to invite any individuals who are here signed up to testify for Mr. Flores' confirmation, and then we will hear from the nominee. For the record, we did receive testimony from June Affleckly, Acting Administrative Officer of the Guam Public Library System, Dr. Matilda Napatie Rivera, Guam Public Library System Board Member, both sending their support for Mr. Flores. I don't see anyone on the line right now, so, Mr. Flores, you may provide your testimony at this time.
Sidoos Masi, Senator Shelton. Buenas, Zambiba Betnis, Senator Shelton, Senator Brown. Sidoos Masi, Parango Goti, Asina Hiningo Pobletku. Just earlier this year, I shared with the committee at my confirmation hearing in February, the great work that I've witnessed and assisted with at the Guam Public Library System and expressed my ongoing commitment to serve on its board. I'm happy to again be before the committee to share the progress GPLS has made in just a few short months since then and to reaffirm my desire to continue my service on the GPLS Board of Directors. Since February of this year, GPLS has made significant strides toward becoming, as I hoped and committed to during my first confirmation in 2019, the premier center of information in our island that exists at the forefront of community engagement and can foster positive experiences among our youth and all our people. For the first time in many years, our library board boasts a full complement of seven board members. These members are actively engaged and meaningfully involved in the board and the greater GPLS. With another first in many years, the Guam Public Library System is proud to have a library director, Mr. Chris Seringan, who with the support of this body and Governor Lulian Guerrero, was hired just earlier this year. Under the leadership of Director Seringan and thanks to the diligent and ever-dedicated staff of the library, GPLS is quickly improving and expanding the services it provides to our island community. Whether it be through the increasing engagement on social media, the many partnerships with community organizations, the greater technologies available at our libraries, the revitalization of the book collection or the recent integration and streamlining of GPLS libraries and GDOE libraries, GPLS is quickly taking its place as a critical center of knowledge, technology and community for the island. I'm incredibly grateful and always proud to be a part of these ongoing steps toward growing GPLS's offerings and staying true to our mission to the community. Having first began my service on the GPLS board in 2019, going from serving as a board member to the board secretary and treasurer to the current vice chairman, I have learned much and I have better realized the ways in which we can grow GPLS as an institution and as a vital piece of our community. In my duties as a board member, I remain actively involved at the administrative level while constantly building my positive working relationships with our library staff and Director Seringan. And as a student representative, advocating for ways to reel our youth in and keep them engaged at the educational centers that are our libraries. I hope to continue my service on the board to follow through with the great work that is in progress and to continually find ways to keep GPLS moving on this ever upward path. Sidoos Masi.
Sidoos Masi, Mr. Flores, for your testimony this morning and your willingness to continue to serve in this capacity. I'd like to recognize my colleague Senator Telo Titigui for joining us this morning as well. Nolan, if you can just talk to us a little bit more about the work you've been doing, especially with youth members of our community. You talked about trying to reel them in and engage them to be more active members of our public library system. And I know that when you came before us months ago, I shared with you that I have very fond memories of the library growing up, lots of time spent there doing schoolwork and just enjoying activities that were offered by the library. And I want to see those same kind of things available to the youth of today. So if you can share with us the progress that you've made in that way.
Of course. Thank you, Senator Shelton. Yeah, so the library has always been really good at, you know, kind of modernizing and evolving its services. So especially with the COVID-19 pandemic, the library switched to like grab-and-go packets that you pick up and you work with at home, right? And the library also expanded its technology offerings. It expanded Wi-Fi to those who were distance learning. So even Wi-Fi without coming into the library itself, being able to pick up on that Wi-Fi from beyond the library. And specifically, or what I've done specifically is just advocate for things like the cafe that was sort of planned but never really executed at the library. And that's really going to bring in a lot of our students and, you know, serve as like a study center. So really opening that up. And that's becoming easier as the restrictions are lifted. And I'm grateful for that. So I'm hoping, once we're back to full capacity, we really integrate those kind of study places and the resources that our libraries offer. And it's also been about, like I said, renewing the book collection and getting books that are new and that are interesting to youth. I know we've received community donations from several new authors. We had a, there was a book signing with a new author who released a zine. So just things like that that pull people in. Because once we bring them in and we show them what the library has to offer, they're sort of, of course, not fearful or not hesitant to come in. And they're getting rid of that mindset that the libraries are old or they don't provide any new services that are useful to the needs of today.
Thanks for that. I know that with having our personal libraries with our phones or our computers at our fingertips, the physical library might not seem that interesting to many young people. But I'm glad to hear of the different offerings that you have, especially this new venture with the cafe that we hope to see. It sounds very exciting, so we look forward to that progress. I'd like to open the floor to my colleagues, beginning with Senator Joanne Brown. If you have any questions for Mr. Flores.
Not so much questions. Thank you, Madam Chair. And certainly appreciate the continued effort of Mr. Flores to want to serve on the library board. And like you, you know, when we grew up, you know, going to the library was quite an interesting adventure because it opened up a whole new world. And then we went through a period on Guam where a lot of our local libraries within the villages were not being funded and were not available, you know, for our children to be able to go visit. And, you know, we need exciting places like this, good productive places for our children to be in. So I don't have any questions for you. I mean, you were just here with us not too long ago talking about these important issues that you support. And, you know, very admirable at such a young age for you to be as engaged as you are in public service. So I certainly have my support. I wish you continued success, Mr. Flores. I don't doubt in the years ahead we'll continue to hear about your contributions to the community. So thank you so much again. And thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to comment on Mr. Flores' nomination.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown. Senator Titigui?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And you know what you said about we have our libraries on our phones now. You know, we carry the library with us. It's, well, it's very profound. It's so true, you know, thinking about it. And your response to how to encourage the youth to come into the libraries was very good as well. Half a day, Nolan. Yeah, I'm so happy that you wanted to continue. I mean, you know, with your background, awards and recognitions, you can choose basically any kind of practice or field you want to be in. Why do you want to work here at this, be on this board particularly?
Sure, yeah. I mean, in 2019, when I was first asked, I know I shared this before. I was just, I was like, oh, the library. I don't really know much about libraries, right? Like, yes, I went when there as a child and I have fond memories, like many of us do. But once I kind of got involved and involved in the more detailed stuff, like working on the budget, presenting the budget to you all, I kind of found this passion, I guess. And this was also through like the Public Policy Institute, right? Passion for government service and really serving our people in the sense that the libraries are at the forefront of that. The libraries are the ones that are providing direct service. The libraries also were instrumental in getting the P U A out to our people, getting the all-rise checks. So I just really enjoy being a part of that work and, you know, working with the library staff who are amazingly diligent, like I said, who have been with the library even throughout its times without a director. For like, I don't even know how many years without a director, without a board to kind of steer the direction of the library. It's just really been a great experience. And I really enjoyed GPLS as an agency, not in just what it does, but in what it is and the people that are there. Yeah.
Very, very well said. Thank you so much for stepping up to the plate. And, you know, I also hope that at the library there might be some place cut out in there where people can come and learn our culture and learn our language, you know, and promote that within the library. Sometimes it's much easier to gather around in a group and practice the language as a group than it is to just pick up your phone and get the, or, you know, get a book and read it, you know, to make sure the pronunciation is correct and the meaning is behind it, you know, things like that. I hope, you know, because I know you're very much involved with the culture and the language, you know, perpetuating our language, that you incorporate that into the library. So I hope you have ideas for that. I think you'll do very, very well. I mean, it's already proven, in fact, you have been. But to, you know, every time I look at you now, I think of our language, I think of our culture, you know, living on to the next generation. So please, hopefully, you know, you'll put that in the library too. Okay? Okay. Well, thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity. And good luck to you, Nolan. You have my support.
Thank you very much, Senator Titigui. Yes, Nolan, you also have my support and the support of Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes, the Chair of this committee. And so we appreciate your time and the efforts that you've been giving to the public library system and what you will continue to do. So we wish you the best of luck and we look forward to moving your appointment. With that, the nomination of Mr. Nolan G.T. Flores as Member, Student Representative of the Board of Directors of the Guam Public Library System has been duly heard. Sidoos Masi. We'll move on to our second item on today's agenda, and that is the appointment of J.C.T. Bravo, Youth Member, Board of Trustees, Guam Educational Telecommunication Corporation, KGTF PBS. At this time, I'd like to invite anyone from the public who has signed up to testify to begin. So I see that we have Ms. Ina Carrillo, the General Manager of PBS KGTF. Please state your name for the record. Please unmute.
Sorry about that. Half a day. My name is Ina Carrillo. I'm the General Manager here at PBS Guam, Guam Educational Telecommunication Corporation, and also known as KGTF Channel 12. I'd like to first start by saying that PBS Guam has always been committed to serving the public interest by providing the people of Guam with quality educational and cultural programming that not only entertains our people, but more importantly, offers educational content and information about the island and people and the world around us. We're excited to add another board member, another member to our board and filling another seat, especially a youth member. It's going to be definitely some insight that we haven't had in the past. And we're just very happy and excited to have, to see this nomination go through. So.
Thank you very much, Ms. Carrillo. Now I'll invite the appointee, Mr. J.C. Bravo. You may begin. Okay, we will take a brief recess so that we can fix our technical issue and we'll come back in a moment.
Good afternoon.
Half a day, we are back from recess. And I'd like to invite J.C. Bravo, appointee, to the Board of Trustees for the Guam Educational Telecommunication Corporation, KGTF PBS, to begin his testimony. You may begin.
Hello and half a day, everybody. Good morning. My name is J.C. Bravo. Thank you, senators, for having me. And thank you, PBS, for the appointment and the nomination. Just a little brief history. I'm not exactly sure I'm supposed to start with this. But my name is J.C. Bravo. I'm 24 years old, born and raised here on island. I'm an entrepreneur. I have a big passion for entrepreneur. I started a media company called Valuable Media about four years ago in 2017. And when I started the company, I went on to work with Lulian Guerrero, Governor Josh, Lieutenant Governor Josh Tenorio in regards to their My Generation Guam campaign, where I helped them reach out to the younger youth in regards to making their vote count. And from there, I went on. I took my experience to work with the Bank of Guam. I worked with companies like AK. So I have a strong passion for, other than entrepreneurship, how I came about to valuable media is through a passion for filmmaking, content creation and marketing. And so with marketing, I just don't think of putting something out nice. I always think of how can we think bigger? How can we educate the community and how can we provide value? So that's the basis of where the company operates and what we think of when we service our clients. We just don't look to put a pretty picture out there. We're trying to get a message across. We're trying to provide value and entertainment to the community. So in regards to PBS, KGTF, I believe I could provide some insights with the modern technology I use to market for my clients. And I can also provide creative solutions to objectives and messages that need to be put out to the community in order to teach the next generation how to do certain things or how to learn about our culture here on Guam. So I look forward. I'm excited. Once I heard the news, I'm excited to put myself in a new room. I'm excited to put myself in a new room with individuals and see how I can bring value to the table and help accomplish one goal altogether.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bravo, for your testimony this morning, as well as Ms. Carrillo from KGTF PBS, Sidoos Masi. Mr. Bravo, I know I've known you for many years now and I've seen your passion firsthand and the work that you've produced. And I am also excited to see to see that you are willing to bring this experience and your expertise in this realm to our public broadcasting station to help them continue to develop. You know, they're celebrating their 51st year of service to the people of Guam. And we hope to see many, many more years of educational television and content being shared with our community. And just like I have fond memories of the public library system, I also have fond memories growing up watching the content of KGTF PBS and enjoying that. And I want that for future generations as well. And so we look forward to what you have to bring to the table. I'd like to ask my colleagues, Senator Brown, if you have any questions or comments for Mr. Bravo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I certainly appreciate Mr. Bravo's interest in serving on the KGTF PBS board and certainly his comments about his interest and perhaps how he'd be very well aligned with being a member of this board. I wanted to ask him, though, what would he like to see to improve or how his contributions certainly can contribute to the betterment of the PBS station there? How does he feel he can contribute to improve that? What is his vision that he wants to contribute?
So with PBS, unfortunately, I just, I got appointed and I didn't know too much about PBS. I knew they were a broadcasting system where they share educational things. So unfortunately, I don't know too much. But from what I do know, I believe, I know education is a big, education is a big part. So I would take some of the experience I have in regards to social media to help create more awareness in regards to PBS. Because unfortunately, like myself, I, you know, I'm 24 years old. I'm probably part of the millennials or Gen X. I don't know what PBS is. Growing up, I don't, I haven't run into it. So knowing that, I would definitely offer creative solutions in regards to reaching my generation and the generations later to bring more awareness in regards to PBS and what kind of education they're providing to the community so that the more people take advantage of it, the more people that know about it, the more that they're willing to share it. And as we all know, word of mouth is the most powerful way to get a message across, especially if it's coming from the heart, especially if they were able to take value away for themselves. So that's, you know, from the top of my head, a way I think I could provide value is trying to make the awareness of PBS and KGTF more known to the younger community.
No, I think that would be wonderful because, you know, total generation difference between us is like, you know, I grew up with PBS. I mean, we grew up listening and watching Sesame Street and a lot of the other programs. And as an adult, you know, a lot of the theater movies that they have, the series of movies that they have, you know, we're very orientated to that. And so, you know, I appreciate your candor and being upfront with regards to the fact that you're not as aware. But I'm certainly looking forward to your contribution because you're the audience I'm sure PBS wants to continue to reach. Because there's a lot of educational content that's provided that can be beneficial to the community overall and certainly for young people like yourself. I mean, you know, we want to build on what's good about Guam and certainly what's good about KGTF has been around for so many years and to get that level of awareness. You know, information moves so quickly now and you're so overloaded sometimes that when you get good information and things that can be beneficial, especially for our young people, especially even their younger children in our community, there's a lot to gain, you know, to keep KGTF is a very viable station. It's been around forever, you know? We used to watch it at a very young age when there were only two stations on Guam when there was just KGTF and Channel 8 before cable even came to the island. So I wish you well. Even though the fact you're not as knowledgeable, Mr. Bravo, you sound like you're someone who's very driven and you sound like you're someone who also has a very creative eye. So we look forward to your contribution. And perhaps when you're reappointed, maybe we can hear what your progress has been and what you've learned and what you've been able to contribute to our community by serving on this board. So with that, thank you very much for your interest to serve. And thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to be able to ask Mr. Bravo some questions this morning.
Sidoos Masi, Senator Brown. Senator Titigui?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Bravo, for wanting to step up to the plate and serve the people of Guam in this capacity, especially in the field that is going to require a lot of funding. That's one of the things in, you know, KGTF and PBS Guam is to raise funds for them. And they have all these fundraisers that's coming up. So maybe your expertise in not just awareness, you know, but also finding a way to raise some funds for PBS. Also, grants, grants are a huge area in which PBS can avail themselves of opportunities for funding for there as well. So and grant writing is not an easy task. So it's definitely taking it out of the realm, your comfort zone for as far as marketing is concerned. But every vote that you make during the board, it's not just going to be for like media or advertising. It's going to be well-rounded. It will be for grant writing. It'll be for salaries. It will be for, you know, everything under the sky besides that. So it's important to ensure you're very, you accolade yourself with all these areas because you're going to, your vote is very precious. And you're going to vote on something that's very important. Then it leads me to the next thing. What happens if you have a conflict of interest on any kind of media or, you know, KGTF or, you know, PBS? They purchase media ads or anything. So how will you deal with that situation? If you come into a situation where there's a conflict of interest and will you be able to recognize that you have a conflict of interest?
Right. You know, Senator, I appreciate, you know, some of your words of advice in regards to some of the other tasks that will be handed to me in regards to grant writing, budgeting, salaries. And those are the things I actually look forward to as an entrepreneur, as an entrepreneur, as a young businessman. I'm not just about what we have to do on a day-to-day basis, but I'm also about how can we think linear and how can we take this to the next level? How can we think bigger picture and do things that aren't just going to be impactful in the short term, but impactful in the long term? So I'm excited for those two things. I'm excited to take myself out of my comfort zone and learn those things. And then in regards to, you know, what was the second one? Sorry.
Conflict of interest.
Conflict of interest. And in regards to conflict of interest, you know, as of right now, there's no conflicting of interest in regards to PBS and my company. And with the value and principles I have as a business owner, knowing that I've already made a commitment to a certain agency or organization, I don't, I won't go and try to step on my own toes and efforts. And then also on the toes and efforts of the agency that I'm, you know, putting my time and effort into. And the same thing goes for my clients here at my company. I work with the Bank of Guam. And from there, I choose no longer to work with any other bank because I understand that I have a commitment. I made a commitment and I don't go against that commitment. So that's, you know, hopefully that, you know, reassures you regards to conflict of interest.
Yeah, J.C., first, I want to congratulate you for actually taking the sacrifice to open a business. It's not easy, you know, to have a business. It's a 24/7 kind of work. People don't realize that. And for taking that leap, you know, and sacrifice, you know, I commend you for that. And I'm pretty sure that all those years that you put into your company, I'm sure you are not going to jeopardize your reputation because your future, you have a great future in front of you. So I appreciate that answer as far as a conflict of interest and that when you do make decisions, it's based on your experiences running a business. So your decisions will tell everybody else who you work for. work for and, and your background, that you're an honest individual. And I, I hope you stay that course. I really do, and I wish you the very, very best. My door is always open if there's any questions or anything I can do to assist you. I know this is a new realm, but it doesn't sound like you're not new to politics because, you know, mentioning that you are working, you know, with the governor's campaign team, you're not new with that. That's true. But if there's anything I can do to help you, assist you to serving the people of Guam so that they can trust your decisions, I'll be happy to, to help you along as best as I can. I thank you again, and I look forward to your confirmation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sisos Masi, Senator Tidigui, and thank you again, Senator Brown, both of you for joining me here today. I'd like to thank Mr. Bravo for your, your time and your testimony today, as well as P B S and General Manager Ina Carrillo, Sisos Masi. With that, the appointment of Mr. J C T Bravo has been duly heard for Youth Member, Board of Trustees for the Guam Educational Telecommunication Corporation, K G T F P B S. With no further questions or testimonies, the Committee on Public Accountability, Human Resources, Guam Build Up, Hagatnya Revitalization, Regional Affairs, Public Library, Telecommunications, and Technology hereby concludes this virtual hearing. Written testimonies may be submitted via email at senatorsmunyabarns@guamelaborature.org or via Dropbox at the Guam Congress Building 163, Chalan Santa Papa, Hagatnya, Guam, until close of business on Friday, December 3, 2021. This virtual public hearing is now adjourned. The time now is 10:31 a.m. Sisos Masi, happy Thanksgiving and have a great weekend, everyone. Please be safe.